Today, watching Lisa play, and I was actually.
You went to Washington Center?
Yes, no.
Okay, invite you to be a friend of the library.
Cool, thank you.
And let you know the next speaker.
But anyway.
Just so everybody knows, the mics are live and we are streaming.
I will be there. Thank you. I know, it's gonna be back, isn't it?
Two, um, or.
Oh, gosh.
Two percent.
I'll do the.
The chocolate.
Those are lower sugar and lactose.
Um, for my kids. For my kids, not me. But I appreciate, oh.
This is an example of what the 3D printer.
Those are lactose free and lower sugar. There's two percent.
That is impressive. Yeah, I've never actually seen the work of the 3D printer before.
Uh, I'm just a little so.
Thank you. Thank you. Very nice. What, what, what I have? How are you tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
I can't.
So, invite you to be a friend of the library.
Okay.
And we put on our. One of the programs.
One of those, okay.
We have what we call our three friends, which is for Tuesdays. This is Michelle from Port Angeles.
Is that working?
Is that working?
This, this one is just fine, but thank you.
And then wearing my hat as being.
Two percent chocolate.
Ooh.
Lactose free and lower sugar, or you can have two or whole.
On Sunday. Uh, this.
Let's go get it, Mark. Thanks, Dan.
I don't know, I, I don't know, I really don't know.
Hey, Tyler, yes. No.
All right.
That is true.
Perfect. I got an email. All right. We're gonna get going. All right, I'll call the Montesano City Council meeting for May 10th to order if you'll stand for the flag ceremony, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in this holy and liberatory justice.
Well, will the clerk please call roll call?
Councilman Bryson. Councilman Coke.
Here.
Councilman Carl.
Here.
Councilman Trimble.
Here.
Councilman Skaramuka.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
And Councilwoman Jester.
Here.
For a motion to excuse.
I moved to. Just so I missed.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Bryson, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We need a motion to excuse the mayor.
Absolutely.
So move.
A second.
There is a motion and a second to excuse the mayor tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh. I would be looking to amend the agenda tonight to add four ordinances for first reading. Uh, there is an amended agenda in front of you. If there's any objections to that.
I'd move to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion and second to approve the amended agenda for May 10th, any discussion?
Um. Do we have copies of these at some place, or we can read them?
Uh, they were on your email.
Okay.
This afternoon.
I'll get it out.
Councilman Wood.
When it comes to the, and I'm not sure if it's 2.38 or 17.46, Mike, which is the hearing examiner? Both. Okay, when, both of them then. Um, when it comes to that point, uh, I'd like to ask the council to move those up to action.
Okay.
Um, since I'm the proponent of, of the change and this is either going to be my last or second to last council meeting, depending on how soon the VA gets their work done on appraisal. So I'd like to be able to vote on it. Um, and if folks want to hold it for next meeting, I'm okay with that too. So I don't know, do we want to talk about moving it up now, or when we get to?
We can talk, how about when we get there and we can decide what type of course of action we want to take on that.
Okay.
That make sense?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an amended agenda. Uh, the approval of the bills. I guess I can make my own motion.
I will second your motion. Mr. Mayor Protam.
Uh, the total bills, uh, for this month are $68,788.25. No bills out of the ordinary and all common business. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
You know you're not gonna set a record tonight, right?
I know.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I like to just.
Make sure you knew.
Uh, next is approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now into the presentation and I would like to introduce Cheryl Haywood, the executive director of the Timberland Regional Library. And she is gonna give a presentation on the library today.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide to you the 2021 state of Timberland Regional Library and several 2022 initiatives. Before I begin, I want you to know that Jasmine Dickoff is your trustee representing Graves Harbor County on the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. With me tonight is Chris Springer, Montesano's library manager. And Helen Hepp, Friends of the Library. And Debbie Cool, Friends of the Library. They're an awesome friends group. You should have received the 2021 annual report, which is up there on the screen as well, for the five counties, that's Mason, Lewis, Thurston, Graves Harbor and Pacific Counties. I encourage you to take a look at the longer report because it outlines additional program services, stories and patron feedback during 2021. It would take me a day and a half to go through that, that magazine. So throughout 2021, Timberland continued to innovate and adapt to changing needs and staff demonstrated their nimbleness and adaptability to changing circumstances. Throughout 2021, our libraries continue to be anchor institutions, playing an essential role in the communities we serve. So here are the 2021 highlights based on the 2020 to 2024 strategic direction, focusing on local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities. Partnering with agencies to support diverse communities and empowering children from birth to five. So here are the highlights in the five counties. Want to begin with, uh, focusing on children. We took 13,000 picture books across 29 libraries, which were reclassified into 14 general themes. So that toddlers, preschoolers and their caregivers can find new reading adventures more easily. We call this project the Picture Book City. We introduced VOX Books for Children, and this is V-O-X. VOX Books for Children are talking picture books in English and in Spanish to listen and to read along to. No need for computer, tablet or phone. We introduced Playaways, and these are preloaded audiobooks for all ages. We introduced Playaway Launchpads with loaded content focusing on STEM and reading for birth to five. This is, this, these are all new formats in addition to all the ongoing baby and toddler and family and bilingual storytimes available on Timberland's YouTube channel. We upgraded Wi-Fi at all the 29 libraries and at our headquarters, and please remember that Wi-Fi is available outside the building from 6:00 AM to, to midnight, seven days a week. We added many, many online resources. Um, just to let you know, we set aside about $4 million a year in our 26, $25 million budget in, in 2021 to purchase both physical content and online content. And so last year and every year, we, uh, look at how the usage is doing for online content and then we drop subscriptions and we add subscriptions. There's a full listing in this e-magazine that you can go through, uh, that benefit people from all backgrounds. And so I just want to mention two in particular tonight. One is ABC Mouse, and this is for early learning ages two through eight, which is a resource that we've had in our libraries for years. And now we have available outside the library anywhere in the world, as long as you have a Timberland card to access. So this is for reading, math and science. And then we added Press Reader, which is access to 7,000 world newspapers and magazines and includes content from over 120 countries in 60 different languages. We added a new 28th library, a popular Lucky Day Demonstration Library, and that means it's your lucky day because you don't have to hold and wait for a hold for a popular item. And demonstration because we're demonstrating to the public that there's a need for it at Capitol Mall in West Olympia, which opened June 1st of last summer with a two-year lease. We opened a 29th library, another popular Lucky Day Demonstration Library at the Hawks Prairie Timberland Library earlier this year on Martin Way with a three-year lease. This means that your library card here in Montesano can, you can use it at any one of the 29 sites, so just as a reminder. Uh, and then we also installed during the pandemic Timberland Story Trails, uh, in all the five counties. And we did this in partnership with the cities and counties and ports and hospitals and US Forest Service. And that's a picture on the front cover of the e-magazine of two children at a story trail. Chris is working on a story trail with the Park Ranger at Sylvia State Park for this summer, so more details to come about that. And all the story trails will be up all, all listed at trl.org. And all of our libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five county region. Myself personally, I've been appointed by the Consortium of County Commissioners to serve on, as a board member on the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council. I'm serving my second three-year term. And as a board member, I lead the One Stop Committee, which is a subcommittee of the PAC Mountain Board that oversees work source in the whole five county region. And I wanted to mention that as all libraries are connection sites, that means that we help job seekers and small business owners get the wraparound services that they require to be successful. Now, for Montesano Statistics, in 2021, 3,118 active library card holders checked out 40,162 items. And that, that's physical items and downloaded from our overdrive, it's called Overdrive, our downloadable, uh, e, e-platform. Um, 3,713 items, that could be ebooks, e-audiobooks or e-magazines. During the pandemic, the place that we got our e-magazines, we had originally prior to the pandemic, 200 titles of e-magazines. And now we have access to over 3,000 e-magazines on Overdrive. And Overdrive comes with an app, and so you can just download as you go. Now for 2022 initiatives, we, uh, analyzed our open hours because it was about five or six, seven years that we had last done so. And so in Graves Harbor County, we increased hours from 282 to 298 hours, that means 16 additional hours. In Montesano, that is 39 to 41 hours a week with staff, that is nine to six Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and 10 to five Saturday, Friday and Saturday. We partnered, uh, prior to the pandemic with a nonprofit called West Care. They reached out to us, it was their first foray in Washington State. They wanted to work with a public library system in rural parts of the state. And so in, back in 2018, 2019, we partnered and opened up a Veterans Connection Cafe in Randall, East Lewis County. This was, uh, an opportunity for veterans to access pensions and disability awards and healthcare benefits. And so, uh, the value of these pensions and so on, uh, surpassed a million dollars by the end of last year. We now just, uh, recently opened up a second Veterans Connection Cafe at the Westport Timberland Library. So that means if there are veterans in this city who want to have access to that kind of service, they can still come to the Montesano Library and Chris will work with them to get connected to either Randall or Westport to get that, that level of service. Want to talk about a new service too that we started as a pilot in 2019. And that was, um, McCleary City Council gave us the permission to try this pilot. We call it Expanded Access Hours. So regardless of any survey we put out to our public on any topic, when they ask us, I mean, when they, when we read the results, it's typically, we want more open hours in the morning, more access in the evening, more access on Sunday. And like you, we are a government, we're a junior taxing district, we are restricted by that 1%. We cannot, you know, we, our budget is 68% is set aside for staff and salaries and that's where we can go. We can't go for more than that. And so we introduced Expanded Access Hours in 2019 in McCleary. This means if you are 18 and over with a library card, you can ask for a key card like this. And you can swipe it and get into the McCleary Timberland Library from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. You can go in and apply for jobs, you can go in and run your business, and I'm not just making this up because people actually did that the year of 2019. Um, and so as of April 18th of this year, the NACEL Timberland Library is opening, uh, has opened up to do this. And as of next Monday, Packwood and Hutzport will be the next two. And as you know, Montesano is owned by Timberland Regional Library, and so we will be making that an Expanded Access Hours. It's gonna take several, I would say several more years to do it, primarily because of the supply chain issues and the complexity of the work. And so that will be coming and you'll be hearing more about that. So Chris has been working on two STEM initiatives with funds from the Montesano Friends of the Library. His goal is to encourage people in STEM through play, so they will be encouraged to explore our, our, our world in creative ways. So towards this end, Chris recently added a couple of devices to make STEM activities fun and enjoyable. The first of these is a color-changing light table, and the light table is designed for ages 18 months through six years of age. There are magnetic tiles for building and the light shines through and reflects off the titles, the tiles rather. As the table changes colors, the light display encourages the children to focus longer and adds a sense of curiosity to a child's experience by presenting their creations in an interesting light. As Chris says, it is quite fun to see how much joy the children experience building things, you can really see the wheels turning. The second item Chris added is a 3D, 3D printer, which can be enjoyed by children and adults alike. It's set up in the main library, draws lots of interest from people. And they, people submit their files that they find on the internet, or they create their own files, and then we print them free of charge. So you all receive something that was printed out by the 3D printer. It's been nine months since the printer was put in the library and it has done hundreds of printouts for people in the community. Chris and his staff regularly post pictures on their Facebook page of all the amazing ideas that people have come up with. Chris also has created a seed garden and, uh, to check out and grow, to use them, you know, to grow a garden. And there we, they will be supplying, uh, seed bombing kits this month as well, which contain clay, soil and seeds. So thank you, Chris, for your efforts, you're leading the charge for the region. Um, I wanted to let you know too that there's a new alliance, so, um, this state has 10 STEM networks. And one of the networks here is called the Capital STEM Alliance, which is the same five county footprint as Timberland Regional Library and as PAC Mountain. And so they are focusing with a strong equity, diversity, inclusion lens on birth through 29 to get people into apprenticeships and work experiences so that they can live here and earn a family wage job. So if you want to learn more about that, uh, information that is at the ESD 113, uh, website. So I want to end by sharing a quote that paints the picture of what Timberland Regional Library has provided to people, especially in the past two years. "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer, but a citizen instead." Thank you very much for this opportunity, do you have any questions?
Any council members have any questions? That was fantastic, thank you very much.
Yes, yeah.
Are we ready for the second slide now?
Yeah.
Are donations being accepted?
Oh, all the time, you mean book?
I mean, sorry, book or money?
Everything.
Both, but I was, but I meant, uh, book donations if we've got ones that.
Are you taking book donations now, Chris?
Friday afternoons.
Yes, Friday afternoons. Yes, and we just, uh, celebrated Library Giving Day, and so we received, I think about $5,000 or $6,000 from, uh, generous donors. And that was during Library, National Library Week, which was second week of April. And we do have gift funds for every library in the system if you want to give to your local library, thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment, is there anybody in the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to committee reports and we'll start with Public Works.
Yeah, okay. Public Works met last Wednesday, I've got s- a whole host of topics, but I'm just gonna focus on two or three, three or four maybe. Uh, the first one is Main Street Closure, you heard me correctly. Uh, the railroad has informed us that it's time to replace the crossing. Across the, and they're asking for a three to five day closure. We're asking them to consider, uh, three to five day closure in the middle of a work week, which shouldn't be hard. And they want to do it in the summer, but we are hoping that we can move it way out in the summer, like maybe October. The second is similar. WashDOT has informed us that, uh, US Highway 12 and SR8 in the next years are gonna be, they're gonna be replacing, I shouldn't say replacing, they're gonna be improving fish passage barriers. And there's five of them between just east of Montesano and just east of McCleary, and they want to do all of them at the same time. And those of you that traveled to Olympia years ago, you remember the, how they did the traffic. And, uh, our biggest concern is the one that's just east of Montesano. It's Camp Creek, and Camp Creek flows underneath Highway 12, just west of Graves Harbor Veterinary Services. Um, it's now, it's a culvert and they're gonna churn it into a span, a bridge. It's gonna affect the intersection just east, which is Brady Loop. Traffic across Brady Loop won't be allowed, there'll be no cross traffic and Highway 12 will be only right-hand exits. So if you're eastbound, you can exit right, if you're westbound, you can exit right. Which leads us to our biggest concern is that people on heavy traffic periods will be heading west, and this will be their last obstruction or bottleneck. And they may be directed or want to direct themselves into Montesano from the east side. And it's gonna put a real impact on traffic in Montesano if this happens. And there's a concern about, of course, the wear and tear on the streets, but I think the biggest concern is if the stoplight backs up enough and it's truck traffic. It could affect emergency services, we could have standing traffic in front of City Hall, or actually not City Hall, Fire Hall. So, um. 2022 is design, environmental studies and community engagement, so if there's some way you can engage with, with WashDOT, I would encourage you. I'm sure Mike will bring that concern up. Thirdly, we'll move on to the third topic, which is fluoride in our city municipal water. Um, at this point, the Public Works Committee is asking the council to consider evaluating the current information that's available. Because it takes the council to make a decision whether we continue on with fluoride in our water or we stop. Uh, we have a concern of Montesano municipal water customer that's very passionate about fluoride in our water, she's very opposed to it. Um, she'd be more than happy to share her passion with us at a later date. Um, and then we also have a recorded, um, presentation from Department of Health where there's, their opinion is still, as it's always been, that they support fluoride in the water and they always have. And there's just a whole host of reading material that you'll be forwarded and you'll have to, we're hoping that you'll make a decision. You'll take whatever information you have and whatever credit, you'll be like a juror in a trial and you'll just sort of have to weigh it and balance it and, and, and we'll make a vote and we'll see if we're gonna continue on. I mean, we, we sorted through it in the committee and we, we don't have a recommendation, but I can say it's not, it's not conspiratory, it's, it's fairly new and I mean, I honestly believe that fluoride in the water is a benefit, but I'm, I'm not convinced that we're hurting ourselves. Some people, you may, you may have that opinion after you hear the information. So more to come, that's it. Council would take that up sometime after May 30th, right? I hope so, most certainly hope so. Okay, not before.
Might have to move that up in the agenda, Councilman. Any other questions for the Public Works Committee? Hearing none, there is a finance report in your packet.
Just wanted to report on behalf of the Milk Committee that there are milks over here, uh, so if anyone in the audience wants a milk, please help yourself. The Milk Committee is a new.
Brand new committee?
Committee.
Perfect.
Pretty short-lived.
Uh, there is a finance report in your packet, as you can see, uh, the 2022 budget positions, uh, as of the first of the month. So if you have any questions on that, one of the biggest ones is sales and use tax is up a couple percentage points. But carefully watched by our, our CFO at the moment. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none, we will go to old business and an update on the ADA policy.
I believe you each got a copy of the, uh, draft in your packets today. It is a draft and we just better would like or appreciate feedback if anyone has any.
It looked good.
We tried to cover all of the required areas that are required under the federal statutes, plus make it our own, give it our own, some of our own language and, and.
And I like that you had, you, you pointed people to the website.
Yes.
If they wanted more information.
There are lots and lots and lots of resources out there. It's an important issue. I think there's very few of us that don't have some involvement, whether it's family or close friends that are, that take advantage of that. They have available resources and, uh, and need that, so.
Appreciate your work on that, Councilman, and, uh, a second for the work that you did on that as well. Anything else on the ADA policy? Moving forward to the fireworks ordinance, Councilman Coke.
What you have before you is, uh, I would, uh, just caution first and foremost, not a ban on fireworks. It is an extra layer of protection that may be taken, uh, in extreme weather circumstances. Uh, this is something that, uh, was brought up post-July 4th last year after we had had the heat dome and, uh, uh, fairly extreme weather, uh, situations. Only to find that had the council sought to take any action, they would not have been able to without the passage of an ordinance like the one that you have in your packet. This would allow the mayor, after consultation with public safety, to, uh, put a, essentially a public safety, uh, temporary public safety ban on fireworks, uh, until such time as, uh, the weather, uh, conditions have passed that would, uh, allow them to be safely set off again. Uh, such action has been taken by a number of other cities, off the top of my head, City of Cosmopolis, City of Hoquiem most recently passed one. I believe some of our neighbors to the south in Pacific County have also taken, uh, similar action. Uh, I find it more than a little offensive that the state will not allow the city to take action, uh, to protect itself in extreme situations. And again, that's, uh, without this ordinance, uh, that, uh, ability to take such action doesn't exist. Uh, so even if we looked around and said with the recommendation of Chief Vance, with the recommendation of Mr. Heiner, that the forest could be in danger, or there could be a severe, uh, danger posed by dry conditions and setting off fireworks at the Fourth of July and New Year's, that's, we, uh, that's those, uh, circumstances. at the Fourth of July and New Year's, that's, we, that those circumstances warranted a ban, we could not do that. As you know, that we, as this would be going against state law, it does require a 365-day gap period, for lack of a better term, between passage and going into effect. And as usually, we don't think about these things until after the fact. I would ask for council consideration and action on this before we get to the month of July.
Anything further?
So we would have to wait until the following July?
This would not.
If we needed to put this in place.
Correct. This would not be in effect until the Fourth of July 2023.
When we talked about this before, we had discussed a, once this goes into effect, so not for '22 but for '23, that there would be, have to be so much notice. So you couldn't basically ban the fireworks, say, July 1, right? Because they've already been sold. So I don't remember how much notice we were talking about. And the other thing we talked about was not just the consultation with the public safety agencies, but using some objective criteria, like has the state fire marshal determined an emergency? And if he or she has, then this is triggerable for, usable for, lack of a better term. Was this in committee? Did it, or does it come directly?
It went public safety, and then they gave direction, and then it came back, and it's been a while since it's actually been.
It's been so long, I don't remember all the details of the discussions, but for this draft, were those two elements contemplated? Or would anybody think they ought to be contemplated before passage?
If you would seek to amend the current draft and bring it back before, the council before the end of June, I have no problem with those discussions. I do think that your suggestion that the action by the state fire marshal for a state of emergency being declared is worthy of consideration. I don't know that we could put a timestamp on it, that it has to be put into effect by this time. If a state of emergency was declared on July the 2nd, I don't know the saying, that it has to be set by July 1st seems to be working kind of counter to the intent of the ordinance.
So I could draft something and send it to you all, but.
Question, Councilman.
This either tonight or two weeks hence will be my last council meeting.
Yeah, question for you, though. So would this be part of the ordinance, or would it just be a policy from the ordinance?
Well, I would say, I would think where, at least where it says consulting with the various public safety folks.
Yeah.
Maybe you could add in that, you know, if there's an emergency declared. I believe during the heat dome, there was an emergency declared by the state fire marshal. So I don't think that would really, it would just add an objective criteria, which I think was one of the concerns.
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't remember how much of the advance time we were talking about. And I get what you're saying, that, I mean, we could get to July 1, and suddenly there's a heat dome that nobody saw coming. Then what? And the fire marshal has said there's an emergency, all of the roadside arrows are over to red. What do you do? I mean, people have sold their fireworks, but if it's not safe, it's not safe. You know, and whether there was commerce transacted and, you know, and all of that. I suppose the fireworks purchasers literally get left holding the bag. But the nonprofits would still receive whatever they intended, you know, except for last-day sales. So I don't know. I'm not sure how I feel about the trigger window. I feel that an objective criteria will help people swallow this a little more easily. And I don't think it's going to add anything to it.
So I guess my recommendation would be this goes back to public safety with a public hearing with the amended.
Do you want me to send you language?
If you send language.
I'll send language. I'm not likely to be here to vote on it in June. It all depends on the VA.
But that would, that would then allow us to have, like you said, that criteria. The committee can put it together and decide whether, you know, whether it's policy that hits that criteria or if it's within the ordinance itself.
I just think that makes it easier for the people that are concerned with the use of the authority.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the timeframe. I don't know how you resolve that, because it's a good point that you don't, I mean, that heat dome was visible a month out, but it might not be in the future.
Correct.
I just wanted to add to the council that, granted, I've only been in this position for a short time, but consulting with, you know, previous chief rocks, that we do follow the county and the state recommendations when they go into a burn ban or an emergency, whatever it might be. So I followed those. I was told that I can go outside those, but I felt that it was, you know, definitely safe and for those people that are making those decisions, DNR, the state, so on and so forth. So we follow along with those very closely.
Burn ban might be another good objective criteria.
Right. Well, and I would say in the summertime, we usually do have a burn ban. So that is not necessarily something that we should put in, you know, that would be in there, but an emergency, a state of emergency and extreme fire danger, that is something, and last year was an anomaly. It was, it was a unique time for us. We usually don't see 115-degree weather here in the West Coast, so.
I think we're going to see more.
And we might.
The state climatologist says we're going to have the same amount of water in the state, but we'll have more in the winter and less in the summer. And so that's going to create other things like these heat waves and dry conditions and that sort of thing. And, you know, it's just, it's just what's happening.
So Dan, in the current ordinance wording, it says that the fire chief and the police chief will bring all of their knowledge to bear, his knowledge to bear.
And I utilize the state and the county to get.
So maybe that covers what you're talking about.
Well, but consulting with somebody is different than saying if such condition exists, right? The mayor should consult with the police and fire chief, but the mayor doesn't have to. They might say, "We're good on the weather. We don't need to do this," and the mayor would still have the authority after consulting to make whatever decision he or she wants to make. And so as this goes out into the future, we may have a current mayor that would listen to the police and fire chief, but, you know, two years hence, we may not. And so if someone's elected that just says, "I don't like fireworks," then you could have a cold, wet summer, and they could still be banned, you know, after consulting with the police and fire chief. So, and that's one of the concerns that was expressed as we contemplated this before, is at least throw in some objective criteria. So the state fire marshal is going to make the determination on fire risk, you know, based on the fire risk. So that's what I'm just thinking is.
Is this decision not something that would be a council vote?
Yeah, this is vested in the mayor, and if emergency action has to be taken, I don't think you want to wait to assemble the council.
No.
You know, I mean, if it's July 1 and the next council meeting is July 12, then, and suddenly we've got, you know, if somebody.
Well, if it's that, if it's that much of an emergency, maybe we should have an emergency council meeting to do that. I mean, that's how extreme this would be, I would think.
Yeah, it would be my goal that this is an ordinance that we would hopefully never have to use. And to Councilman Wood's point about what a future mayor may, may or may not think, it's the perils of representative democracy. We could have a president who thinks something two terms from now from the one that we have now. So we could have a mayor who thinks something different. That's the.
Yeah, right.
The risk that you run. But again, I feel that with, I think the criteria that you have suggested with the state fire marshal, with emergency or burn bans, I think the addition of a criteria like that is not a, is not a bad idea. And I would look forward to seeing the language that you're going to propose on that. But again, I think that the goal of this is just to give our public safety departments and the city administration the ability to act in the city's best interest, which currently we are not allowed to do.
And I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the language in the RCW that gives this process to us. It may not provide for a council to make a decision. It may only, I don't know.
I don't know that.
It might only provide for a mayor to make a decision. And even if it gives council or mayor authority, I think, I think you want to be nimble on these decisions if it's a true emergency, which means you kick it to the mayor's office. That's.
So Councilman Coke, would you be opposed to having a public hearing on that for the June 14th meeting? Or would you like to have a public hearing at the May meeting?
I would think that, given the fact that we want to, if there are suggested changes, I think June 14th does put us at a pretty tight end of, you know, tied up against the end of June. If changes are sought at that point, or more changes are made, I would like to see it brought back for a public hearing at the end of May. I believe that Councilman Wood will be here for that. If he has amendments, he would be able to speak for them.
But I think sooner is better.
Agreed.
Because when you get to '23, if you don't have a hearing until the 14th, and even if you act that night, that means the authority on this thing doesn't kick in until the 14th of June in '23, and you already have fireworks sales. So if there is a heat dome visible on the horizon in the beginning of June of '23, the mayor cannot exercise the emergency authority.
Valid point. Okay, so we will set a public hearing for the 24th at the beginning of the meeting on the ordinance. With the ordinance and the amended ordinance, we'll have it posted so that everybody can see it. That means that public safety needs to meet sometime between tomorrow and the 19th of May. And so we will get that committee together and have a meeting on that. So the sooner the better. You have that language, then I can finagle that in. Councilman Wood. Anything else on the fireworks? Yes, Mr. Coker.
Please, silence.
Yes.
Who's going to, who's going to be responsible to get me that draft ordinance, the amended ordinance?
I will.
Somebody phone buzz. Okay, okay.
Do you want me to send it to you? You want me to be copied on that?
Please. Anything else on the fireworks ordinance? Hearing none. We will move on to new business, and first up is a contract renewal with the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission.
Council, this is a contract that we sign every year for the Target Zero Task Force. This has to do with funds that we receive or that we are able to utilize for traffic enforcement, for DUI, seatbelts, and so on and so forth, and different events throughout the year. So I would ask the council for the mayor's approval to sign that contract, so we can have those funds for the summer.
Now you move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
A second.
There is a motion by Councilman Wood, second by Councilwoman Jester, to authorize the mayor to sign the renewal of the contracts with the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second up is the agreement with Warehouser for the release and hold harmless.
And this is a contract that we sign every year for our annual EVOC training, Emergency Beagle Operation, down at the Warehouser log yard in Aberdeen, or South Aberdeen. Warehouser is gracious enough to let us use their log yard every year, which saves us a tremendous amount of funds. And again, this is agreement, I vetted it through Chris, or our council, city attorney, Chris Coker, and he has formatted this and gave it to me, and again, I would ask the council's approval for the mayor to sign this contract.
So moved.
Second. There is a motion and a second to sign the release and hold harmless with the Warehouser Company. Is there any discussion?
This is driving school, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Hearing any others? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And thank you.
Moving on to the McBride sidewalk bids. Church to Calder right-of-way. Director Olden.
Okay, so we have a, kind of a long-term sidewalk project that is sited for the south side of McBride Avenue from Church Street to Metcalf Street. It's broken up into four parts. Two of the parts are to be done by city crews, and the other two are slated for funding by the Transportation Improvement Board if we can get two rounds of funding from them. We did get one round of funding from them this year, so that's what we're asking to award, is the first phase of the TIB part of the project, which goes from Church Street to about 100 feet past North Chehalis, so even a little bit past the Calder right-of-way, which is in the street there, but it's a right-of-way there. So we also have a water project combined with this. There's some conflicts with a water main and some old services that weren't installed properly back in the day. So we're going to take care of that when we're taking care of the sidewalk project. And I added an additive alternate to this project, just to see what kind of pricing we would get to extend that water main up Chehalis to help take care of more of the bad service lines that are there. And we actually did get pretty favorable bids on that additive alternate. I didn't have that programmed in budget-wise, so I am making a request to use some of our ending fund in 407, which is our water reserve capital funds, to use for that alternate. And it's, we don't have to do the alternate. And yes, but anyway, I see a question coming. No?
So tonight, do you need just the bid award, or do you need the other action as well?
So there's two options that I've given at the bottom of this kind of project summary. So one of the action items is to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Rogelins for the full amount of the bid, which is $323,847.50. And with that, to utilize System Reserve Fund 407 ending fund balance to fund the additive alternate work. Or if the council chose not to fund that additive alternate work, you could, you know, just fund the base bid, which was $272,120, so.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Rogelins for the $323,847.50 and utilize Water System Reserve Fund 407 ending fund balance to fund the alternate.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Rogelins for the $323,847.50. Any discussion?
I have a question. How, how big of a water main? Are we running it up north?
It's a six-inch water main. Eventually, it will loop up with the water main that was extended years ago over to the top of Wilder Hill Drive, or the base of Wilder Hill Drive.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to the 2022 Small Paving Project Bids. Director Olden.
Okay, so we received a $50,000 grant from TIB to do what they call maintenance work, which is generally in the form of what they call pre-leveling or paving, small paving jobs. And the city, the city's part of this is $2,800, so that's our match. So I budgeted in $55,000. I think at the time, that's what I thought the match was going to be, was $5,000, but anyway. So we received three bids for some small paving jobs. One of them's a little bigger than small. It's up on Bennard Lane. The other two project areas are Academy at the Schofield Creek area, which has a kind of a sunken area and some bad pavement there. We need to do some pre-level before we do a double chip seal on Academy in that section later this year. The other part is over at the north end of Fourth Street, adjacent to Spruce Street. You're well familiar with that area. It's a really awful section of street. And then if everything goes well, we'll fill in some, or we'll pre-level some areas at Third and Spruce as well. So questions? some areas at Third and Spruce as well. So, questions?
Anybody like to, I would entertain a motion for this.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Granite for $46,667.
A second.
There is a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Granite for $46,667. Is there any further discussion? Pausing for Councilman Wood to come back in the room. Any further discussion, Councilman Wood? There's been a motion and a second to accept the bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will move on to a proclamation for EMS Services Week, and I will read that now. The proclamation is designate the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown up to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Benny Samuel, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With EMS, strong theme, EMS Week, rising to the challenge, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. All right, moving on is the professional services contract with the, for the municipal court clerk with the City of Ocean Shores. And I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the contract. Is it written?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to accept the professionals, allow the mayor to sign the professional services contract for municipal court clerk services with the City of Ocean Shores. Is there any discussion?
So is our court clerk going to be going out to Ocean Shores?
Yes.
Does that have any negative impact on our operations here? Thanks for those very clear answers.
No, it won't.
Have we ever done anything like this before? This is a forester.
The court clerk has also worked out in the city of Oakville.
Okay.
And is that out there?
The Ocean Shores Municipal Court has had an emergency. They had put it out for the other cities, the neighboring cities to help. Well, it's more of a help. It's for a three-month to six-month term now. And Kay and I had a long, lengthy talk about it. She seems to think that she can do two days a week with three days a week in here, and we will be reimbursed for wage and benefits and mileage. But we are doing, we're helping out of service for at least three months. That's it. They are putting it in the paper, and we'll go ahead with the process to hire.
And this is the only city we're doing this with?
Yes. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I'm a yes. Just following your mode.
We move on. The motion carries. We move on to the Grace Harbor County Interlocal This is an agreement that the county perform various public works projects at a time in a manner convenient to the county. And it shall terminate on December 31st, 2026.
Is this basically their kind of road and right-of-way engineer? Is that what Tom, is that what we're doing here?
This, this interlocal allows us to use county services to do surveying, right-of-way agent work for us, and chip sealing. So it's a, it's a huge benefit to us to have this interlocal. They provide all, a pretty good service to the city of Montesano. We pay for it, obviously, but.
Any bargaining agreement issues if we're using any other than our staff, like the chip seal or other work? Is it outsourcing?
Uh, no. We have a, we're a code city, and so the laws for us is we don't have any limit on the amount of public works that we can complete with our own forces.
Did you get a motion? I move approval if no one else has.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the Grace Harbor County. Is there any further discussion?
We've done this before. Didn't we do this last year?
Any further? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move on to ordinances and resolutions. And there was a separate email sent out to you with the two ordinances regarding the annexation. This is the Heiner annexation and the Martin annexation. And we'll start with the Heiner Director Olden.
Still no.
Okay, so these are the annexation ordinances. I take it first. So we have been working on bringing our dear forester into the city for, it seems like five years?
I used to have around here.
So, so this is a continuation of that process. So we have, the county is working on certifying it. As they do that, I wanted these in and read for the first time so that they'd be available to be voted on, when and if the county provides a certification to us. Now, I talked to them a little bit more today. Turns out that we may not act on these until the end of June, but there is a, there is daylight at the end of this tunnel. So no action, no need to do anything with these. So, but I'll take questions.
Any questions for the director on that?
This, this is point eight, this is two, two homes?
You have two, is it two homes?
Two parcels there.
Two parcels.
And these have come before the council. We've had a public hearing on these. The council's basically accepted doing it twice now. There's one more step in the process for the council to pass an ordinance to officially accept them the third time, I suppose. So we'll, we'll just keep moving along.
You've been dealing with this the whole time I've been here, I think.
Maybe.
I think you're right. Anything further on those? All right, we will move down to the first reading, or whatever the council's pleasure is, of amending chapter 2.38 of the Montesano Municipal Code.
Director Olden. Explanation of it?
I'm going to let Director Olden explain that.
I can take a shot at trying to explain what we're doing here. So, oh, quite a, quite a while back, maybe, maybe close to a year ago, I brought some fee, development fee changes to the Public Works Committee. The discussion was, wow, that's really big fee increases. It was generally driven by the cost of the hearings examiner. We had a fairly cost, low-cost hearing examiner for 20 years. He retired, hired a new hearing examiner, and the going rate for those guys went up quite a bit more. So, so the discussion was, how do we save citizens' money? Part of that discussion ended with Dan providing a draft of some changes to our code that would allow the city council to rule on what we, what we classify as more simple variances and conditional uses. And so in these two code ordinances, there is one that deals with 2.3, or Municipal Code 2.38, and the other one deals with Municipal Code 1746. Both of these code changes were gone over by Public Works Committee numerous times. Then it went to a public hearing with the hearings, or with the Planning Commission. And then it came back to Public Works Committee just this month to amend just some real minor language at the beginning of 1746. So, yet, one of the conditions that the Planning Commission did put on it, that the city attorney was made aware of these changes and didn't have any issues legally. I assume Chris is willing to attest to that fact since he's gone through them and given me these ordinances, That was his cue.
Silence is yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we need a motion?
Councilman Wood?
Just to add to the explanation. So what we recommended as a committee, and then the Planning Commission has recommended, is if it relates to something complex, like the Shoreline Management Act, the Growth Management Act, the State Environmental Procedures Act, or long subdivisions, or plants, so 10, more than 10?
Yes.
Or 10 or more, that those are all complex in nature. And so we would have those sent to the hearing examiner directly. For everything else that is more simple, it might be that, you know, you cannot put a house on there under the, you know, the size of the yard regulation, or a conditional use permit, or I don't know what other variances we have. But the simple things, they would come to the council, and we have language in, in here that also says, if the applicant wishes to express that he or she wants it to go to the hearing examiner, they can express that in the application, and then the council could go, all right, send it to the hearing examiner, or no, we're going to consider it here. But there is not automatically that fee when something comes to the council. But I can tell you, I have dealt with the Shoreline Management Act and the Growth Management Act and SEPA for 37 or 38 years. And it is remarkably complex. And there is myriad case law on it. There is a Growth Management Hearings Board, and then you go through Superior Court of Appeals, State Supreme Court. I just don't want that stuff coming to council because I, I mean, I've obviously broken record. I'm not going to be here after the end of the month for sure. But if I were here, I wouldn't want to deal with that stuff. Let have somebody who has a, a, you know, maybe a lifetime of expertise, who practices this stuff all the time, consider the complexity because it may end up in court. This other stuff, bring it to the council, save the money. And that way, when we raise the fees, we're mitigating the impact on most people. And I believe next council meeting, there will be the proposal for the fee increase. And these are meant to go, you know, very close together. You know, one kind of mitigates the other. So not knowing if I'm going to be here in two weeks, I'd like to be able to vote on this, you know, just as a, as a request. It's had the hearing from the Planning Commission. It's been mullied around in committee for.
A long time.
A long time. I think we did a pretty thorough job on it, and said, what about this, and what about that, and how can we save people money? How can we recuperate our costs? Because we might, right now, we might charge somebody 150 bucks for the the hearing examiner, and then we'll turn around and pay the hearing examiner 1,000 bucks, depending on, on how much work is done. That's a money loser. So that's, so my request is that we act on it tonight. If y'all want to wait, I understand.
Council's pleasure.
I make a motion that we approve. The language is written.
We're going to go one by one, so we're going to, I'm going to take that as a motion to amend chapter 2.38 of the Montesano Municipal Code.
Thank you.
Are they basically the same thing, it just how it's in different places of code? That'd be probably separate motions.
There's going to be a separate motion, because it's a roll call vote on each of them.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to amend chapter 2.38 of the Montesano Municipal Code, which, back to the top here, is an ordinance of the city, of the city council, of the city of Montesano relating to the city Municipal Code Sections 2.38.070 and 2.38.120 of the Municipal Code, providing to the severability effective date in best interest of the city.
So roll call?
It is a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing, none. Please call roll call.
Councilman Bryson?
Councilman Coe?
Aye.
Councilman Carl?
Aye.
Councilman Trimble?
Aye.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Jester?
Amending chapter 2.38 of the Montesano Municipal Code passes. Entertaining motion on the second.
I move approval of the recommended changes to chapter 17.46 of the Montesano Municipal Code.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to amend chapter 17.46 of the Montesano Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion on that?
I just want to say that compliments are due to Councilman Scaramucca and Coe, to Mike, and to Chris for all of the work that went into this. And the Planning Commission.
Anything further? Hearing, none. Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Again?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Coe?
Aye.
Councilman Carl?
Aye.
Councilman Trimble?
Aye.
Councilman Scaramucca?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Jester?
Aye.
That motion carries as well. Thank you. Moving on to the second public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Hearing, none. We will go to council comments. We'll start on the left side of the room where there's four of you. Councilman Scaramucca on the right side by himself. Councilman
I don't know if all of you are aware or not, but the Grace Harbor EMS and Trauma Board has had difficulty with funding. They received a grant from the Quinault Tribe to keep them in operation through December 30th of this year. That's fabulous news for our local communities. Now the work begins, or continues to seek sustainable funding for that organization. If anyone has any hidden resources in their pockets, let us know. I'd be glad to pass that on. Secondly, I'm, I'm excited to discuss this fireworks ordinance. It's a very fine line with maintaining traditions of fireworks in our communities and, at the same time, maintaining a safe environment for everyone that lives here. And I think we're headed the right direction with the, with some criteria that, that add trigger points to that ordinance. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
A couple of announcements. July and August will be the Saturday market. So if anyone is interested in that, go to the Montesano Chamber of Commerce Facebook page. Becca is the contact there. And on the last Saturday in July, we will be adding in the Welcome to Montesano. This is the idea that originated with the mayor. We will be set up in the Detail Shop at Whitney's. And the businesses and nonprofits will be contacted, if they haven't been already, to be. to be offered booth space and information. And that'll be sent out to everybody. So whether you've been in Montesano for 30 years or just moved, if you have that Montesano in-town zip code, that will be the target for the invites. As I mentioned, so I'm announcing my resignation from the council effective May 30th, unless the VA gets something done sooner for the buyer on the appraisal. And VA is notoriously slow. So this is either my last council meeting, or two weeks will be my last council meeting. Either way, even if VA lingers after May 30th, I'll no longer be on the council. Tyler, you will not necessarily enjoy this, but I'm going to share some thoughts that are a little longer than normal. So I want to say that this is a great community. It's been a privilege to be here. We don't always see eye to eye on things, but I think the main thing is there's so much to celebrate on what we have done together. And for so many of you, just the things that popped into my head while sitting here is you have twice added to the forest, which is not only good for keeping the water rates down and having the high-quality water infrastructure here, but you all have added future revenue. Probably it'll come when you're all gone from here, which makes it a noble legacy decision so that there will be money coming into the general fund to help pay for fire and police and other things. That's remarkable. You have set financial goals. You have added top-flight people to the admin team. You have ordered, waiting for to arrive, an appropriate generator for the fire department, made great improvements to sidewalks and streets, began the trail to Lake Sylvia, and saved the wastewater treatment plant. There's so much more that so many of you have done. And I think the public doesn't know half of it. But you've done some remarkable things for this community. Dave, your knowledge of the infrastructure and the value of you as that resource, I think, is unmatchable, looking back in time and even forward. You have a remarkable gift for understanding how everything works, what was done well and what was not done well, and how to fix it. Tyler, finances, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you so much for stepping up on Mayor Pro Tem. I promise you, it was not a trick for me to step down and you to step in in order to take all of the heavy burden, but I'm so glad you were doing it and not me with the things that happened in your time. Thank you for that. Val, your community involvement, especially with the community center, is remarkable. And you are a wonderful presence on this council. Ian, forestry, parks, community sports, I mean, you are so passionate about all of those things, and all have been improved and well-served because of you. Clint is not here, he can see this later. He is a peacemaker and a pathfinder. When we have been divided, sometimes three to three, he has been the fourth person to say, and plus it put him in total control. But he finds a way to get everybody on the same page, and that is so valuable. Rollin, for the fire department, for the career and volunteer folks, you are the right person to be here for what we have there. And thank you for being the first first responder when I had my low blood sugar and couldn't speak, and scared the dickens out of Tyler and Ian, other than, though later they both admitted it was nice that I couldn't speak. And Ian told me he had waited, I think, 30 years or 20?
20.
20 years for me to be speechless. I'm glad I was able to give that to you. Lauren, your management of the forest, I think, is unmatchable in the state. You have done wonderful things for us, Hoquam Aberdeen, and you have added so much to the use of the forest and the volume of the forest. And you have been instrumental in providing future revenue for everything for the city. Brett, I don't know if you're, oh, there you are. You're a great chief for the police department. You've been a great chief stepping in and doing double duty with the fire department. My interaction with you has always been wonderful. And I know you have brought so much out from our staff in both departments that make this a great community. And visitors see it. I see how you treat visitors and residents alike. Gretchen, welcome. See you later. The experience that you're bringing here is phenomenal. And I got to tell you, she went to school with my wife. And so, I mean, I know lots of things about Gretchen, and they're all good. They're all good. I'm glad you're here, that was a great addition, Mike. There you are. Good management. You have brought out the talents and the passion of our public work staff. And they are doing what they're best at in their different roles. You have elevated people. It's a great team. You're a great administrator. You have saved us so much money and brought, you brought in so much money. You, as an engineer, you've saved us money, tens of thousands of dollars a year. I know you don't like to hear that because, you know, you're a humble guy, but it's phenomenal what you've done for the city, you know? And I know you love doing that because this is where you grew up. I could probably mention every staff person by name. I just want to call out three on Public Works, Ryan, and Kevin, and Jason. I've had the privilege of interacting with those guys a lot. They are so committed to the city, it's not just a job for them. They are awesome. And they have given so much. The final fun thought I would share with you is I went by the park across from the laundromat today, Brian Park. Most people don't know the name of it. I checked out the Weeping Willow. And in 2016, I noticed when Johnny Chambers' memorial was there. It was in disarray, it was neglected, it was Memorial Day. And I went there and I was completely aghast. And at the time, we thought Johnny was the only person we lost as a community in Vietnam. Turns out, there was two. David Harner was the other one. A year later, we put up a memorial in Fleet Park, and it was amazing to see 50 years after those guys were lost, probably 400 people came to honor that loss to the community and put up a new memorial. But at the time, when I was out there cleaning up the site, putting down the bark, weeding, and I put three screws into the willow tree, this is more funny now than it was at the time, because I wanted a flag flying on Memorial Day. And it broke my heart that the community had neglected that site. And instead of being thanked by the mayor and the city administrator at the time, different mayor than we have now, the city went on, the city administration went on Facebook, and they had forced one of our Public Works employees to pose in a picture taking that flag down for political purposes. And it was an abuse of political power for a political agenda. And they basically, knowing that I had put the flag up there and the three screws for the flag holder, they said somebody had vandalized, defaced, and something else, all legal terms, city property and that park. And that if anybody had any information, they should call the police department. And Brett did not overtly and officially cry bullshit, but I'm sure you did that on a private basis because he recognized that was an abuse of power. And they wanted information, and they had basically described a felony, a Class C felony, which carried up to $5,000 fine and up to a year in jail. My friend Terry Ziliut immediately went on Facebook and said, I know who did it, it was Dan Wood. And then a hellstorm broke loose. I was contacted by the Patriot Riders. These are the veterans on the motorcycles. I had a guy who said he was an admin for 10,000-member network of veterans in Western Washington, and that they were going to come down and surround the park and surround me and prevent my arrest. And a good friend's mother posted, you leave my Danny alone, and my boyfriend was blown up in Vietnam, and I will chain myself to the tree. And I had to say, you know, Cat, you're 76, do not chain yourself to a tree. And I had to tell the veterans groups to, you know, back off, where this is going to get settled down, it's this political grandstanding. But the abuse I saw in 2016, and the conversation between the mayor and the city administrator at the time, that basically said, that SOB is doing this because he's going to run against me for mayor. It was so grotesque. And to be able to serve with people after that, that haven't done that sort of grotesque abuse of power, has been one of my greatest privileges. And I want to thank you all for that. I did take a picture, you'll see it later on Montesano Matters. The screw holes are not visible. The tree is in good health, and you cannot see the oversized smear of tree goo that was supposedly put on to save it. And so as this might be my last meeting, or next meeting will be, I wanted to basically begin and end on the same way, and say it was an abuse of power that brought me here. I will not forget that. And I appreciate serving with people who have the community at heart and are not trying to intimidate and harass and terrorize employees and the public. So thank you very much. If I'm here in two weeks, I'm sorry.
You'll have the opportunity to talk to the mayor then.
What's that?
You'll have the opportunity to give the mayor her farewell.
Well, and, you know, I would say, oh, I forgot to mention the mayor, I had her on here. She has had idea after idea for this city. And as I said before, some of them have been good ideas. But the ones that are good ideas have been remarkable ideas. We are going to have so much for the future of this community because she has thrown so much spaghetti up against the wall, and some of it has stuck. And she and I have locked heads a number of times. We are almost like the old married couple of the city. We fight, but we work together and we make it work. So I have said before, I think she is the greatest mayor I've seen in my lifetime, and I mean that. And the fact that we've disagreed on things doesn't change that. So thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. And thank you for letting me serve with you all.
Councilman Coe.
In addition to that, I think Councilman Wood will go down in history for the longest council comments ever.
Oh, another thing.
So, yeah, I would thank Councilman Wood for his service to the city. I've known Dan since he was a county commissioner, covered him as a reporter at that point. I've enjoyed being on council with him. I think that the ordinances that were passed today are a fitting example of just what he brought to the council, a knowledge and ability to draft, and, you know, he complimented Councilman Scaramucca's knowledge of city infrastructure. But Dan's knowledge of process and the way ordinances are put together, the way city policies are put together, have been a great value. And I think that's an excellent example and a fitting tribute to your time. And glad we were able to get it passed before you sail off into the sunset, or to Satse, as the case would be. I would also compliment the Public Works Committee on the entire fluoride debate. I think we'll have more discussion on that. But I've seen those types of debates go off the rails and not be substantive, not be fact-based, not be civil. And it couldn't have been further from the opposite of that. It could be more opposite of that, excuse me, from what we saw at the, at our Public Works meetings. There's clear passion that the advocates for removing the water fluoridation, and there's clear passion on the other side as well. So I look forward to continuing that and coming out with something for the best interest of the city. Yeah, I share what Councilman Carl said. I look forward to this discussion on the fireworks ordinance and thank Councilman Wood for possibly, you know, getting his last, his last ordinances or his last amendments before he resigns to come up with a good, again, layer of protection for the city, people of Montesano and the assets of the city of Montesano. I know it's something that's very close to people's heart. And they, anyone who's been in Montesano on the Fourth of July knows that the fireworks displays that collectively go on here would rival what happens up in Seattle or possibly over the mall in DC. It's a pretty impressive sight, but I just want to make sure that we are in a position to act in our own best interests and our own protection, should it be necessary. Hopefully it isn't. But should it be necessary, I want to make sure that we have the ability to recognize what's needed here in Montesano. It's been great to be out at the ballpark, to see some games going on. Hats off to Montesano Little League and all of the other organizations for getting those facilities up and running. Been a challenging go with the weather that we've had. I think we've had just about everything in the last month that can fall from the sky. So hopefully there'll be more baseballs falling from the sky here soon as the kids get out and get to play the great games on our city facilities.
Thank you, Councilman Coe. Councilwoman Jester?
Well, I wanted to, first of all, thank Lauren Heiner for all that he does. And he was written up in the Daily World by Aberdeen City staff for the championship-level work he did for them. And I'm sure that also holds true for the work you do for Hoquam. And I was delighted to read about the Quinot Nation picking up the interim, giving over the monies for the EMS to at least get through the end of the year and see if something else can be figured out. I hope everyone is thanking them with their whole hearts. At the community center, senior center meeting today, we opened, reopened the dining room last week, last Monday, first time in two years after COVID. And this week, we're starting back with the activities we always used to do. So there'd be exercise class, and they do karaoke on a certain day, and pinochle another day, and train, is there a Mexican train? I've never heard of that one before. Anyway, and so lots of fun things and also services. We're getting folks in who can help our elderly population with their concerns and insurance and things like that. We are desperately in need of drivers, I say this every month. So I'm saying it to the community at large, we're desperately in need of drivers to deliver meals to the homebound. Usually it takes 30 minutes, maybe 40 on a given day, but we are just, we've lost a lot of people who could, who were doing that previously. And then I also, I think you are Alan Lester, aren't you? I would like to welcome you to East County. I was very pleased to see that they hired someone to cover East County. I had noticed the lack. So thanks for coming here this evening and hope to hear a lot more from you. Thanks.
Wow. Councilman Scaramucca?
First of all, I would like to offer thanks to...
First of all, I'd like to offer thanks to, first of all, Timberland Regional Library. It's impressive. Your presentation was great. I always knew the library was more than just a bunch of books, but it's impressive with some of the things you're doing. It's great, really is. Councilman Coe, thank you for your fireworks ordinance continuing work. It's something that I, that's dear to me. And Councilman Carl, thank you for your extracurricular activities on the ADA policy. And Gretchen, too. And Dan, jeez, wow, where do we start? Thank you for being overly critical of this council, that's firstly. There's a lot of decisions that would have been different if you weren't here, and you have a lot of insight. And I want to back up a few years. Let's go back to like 2015, back maybe when the screws went in the tree. We were friends, we walked around the city, and we created a vision. We were just citizens, but we didn't like the way things were going. We did, it just, I had my issues and you had yours, and there was a really interesting relationship between the city and the public, and the citizens of the city. And one can see that, I've got an old, there was a publication in the city years ago, the weekly newspaper called The Vidette, and I've got an issue that was, it was, headlines were, Samuel wins a landslide. But it's not only the fact that when I opened up that paper, I still have it, and I read the articles in there, and there were some interesting articles of things that were going on in this city at that period of time. And I will bring it in on my last council day, I want the council to read that newspaper, and you'll see, eight years ago, the things that were going on between Public Works and the community, and The Vidette, and communication, and how we were, how the city was being run. And I think Dan and I were propelled in here just for the vision that things would have to be better. We have to create something better for this community in relationship to giving the citizens what they deserve. And there was so much conflict going on, and we just weren't, we weren't an effective government or we were effective city as far as our public works and everything. We were just constantly, I mean, there was rumors that some of our department heads were constantly looking for other places to go to work. And that was not anything that I visualized, so. I mean, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, Dan. I don't think you remember the night you woke me up out of a sleep.
Sorry.
No, that's not true, because I think life is continually learning, and every time I come here, I learn something. And you are just a plethora of knowledge and is for learning. And I think if you quit learning, then you lose the ability to learn, and then you're just not, life isn't even interesting. And I owe a lot to you, I really do. I know I wouldn't be here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
That's it. Awesome, thank you. Okay, and the library, I think the library for their contributions.
Are these council or mayor comments you're making?
Half and half.
Yes.
2022 Home and Garden Show this weekend. It is starting off with tomatoes and ending with tomatoes, so I don't know if I will be there for the start or the end. I'm not a tomato fan. There is The Friends, top of our bestsellers list, so please join The Friends of the Library. Tab is here, she is the spear leader of that, and will always be giving us information, and I appreciate that. I thank the mayor for the proclamation on EMS Services Week. That was important to me, I asked her to put that in the packet, so everybody knows that EMS and all the EMS people and that work in EMS are in my bloodwork. Speaking of EMS, I did attend Fire Ops 101 in Richland last Thursday and Friday. I went with Aaron Rux from our fire department. What an experience. You really don't know what you don't know until you get in there and actually do it for yourself. I do have a couple blisters on my knees from calling around on the concrete for hours and climbing up a ladder 90 feet in the air and fighting a live fire myself. So a lot of cool experiences, really shows what our career and volunteer firefighters do, and I look forward to working even harder for that.
I need more volunteers at the department.
Oh, it's, maybe there'll be an application submitted, I don't know. Councilman Wood, whether it's your last meeting or you have one more, I'll probably say it again. You were the one that also propelled me into this, and said that, yeah, you should give it a try and see what happens, and here we are, nine years later, doing this whole thing. But we're kind of the same way, we've butted heads, we've disagreed, we've agreed, we've gone separate ways, we've come back together, we've always, the thing I can say is it's always professional. It's never personal, it's always, business is business and friends are friends. So I appreciate you for always bringing a second look at it, sometimes very long-winded. But overall, overall, you did bring a heck of a lot to this council and this community, and you always will, and you always have, so appreciate that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Fitting.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.